Hello and welcome to the Venus Project UK FAQ Study Session. This week we're looking at 52, 53 and 54 as mentioned in questions this week. So I hear you, he might join in in a sec. So we'll go straight into question 52 and look at some of our answers. So the question was, will there be a government? Anyone want to kind of pitch in their ideas first?
I want to say no, there will not be a government, but I don't know what it will be.
Okay, mine is short enough, I suppose. So my answer was Corson or Correlation Centre takes in data, analyses it and performs problem solving as needed. Also same data that's been collected can be seen by anyone who needs it or wants to see it.
That's good. Mine, I'll say, what did I say? So there would be a degree of inbuilt automatic government such as in the human body. Processes can be designed to interact automatically to instability and retain balance. This has nothing to do with a one world government. In fact, the Venus Project is proposing a cybernetic government where sensors have been deployed into the environment, monitoring and responding to events in the most appropriate method known at the time.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, but what I said was you have to define the term government before you answer the question because at the moment government within a minority system is an authoritarian top-down dictatorship, which you always get in the capitalist system. And it uses various means to manufacture consent and force the will of a minority onto people. But in an RBE, as we said in the last discussion, we'd have a competent democracy where resources are managed by cybernetic processors. But within a process of flat control, so people will be fully informed about all the situations we find ourselves in. And everyone would participate in the management of our world without influence by any controlling minority. If that makes sense.
Testing me, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, definitely. And you're right to pick up on how you, what do we call a government? But yeah, cool. I'm curious, I don't know if he's back or Danny, do you want to go for yours?
Yeah, I said it would be a cybernetic government, so a central computer will determine the decisions or arrive at the decisions regarding what to do with the resources. Because a computer can carry out all calculations much faster and more accurately than any human can. And computers also unbiased. And so I'm thinking there's going to be no humans in charge and therefore no pyramid structures that we find in today's society. That's my answer.
That's good. I think we've all gone out from slightly different angles, but come to the same kind of answers. Does anyone have any kind of questions on that before we go through the real answer?
I just said I had it in me, there will be scientific method competent democracy and a computer around the helm. But yeah, go for the real answer, I don't know.
Right, just before we go to the real answer, you've said a couple of times competent democracy. What does that mean in terms of the Venus Project?
For me, I had the idea that it was the people who can pass tests to show that the subject that they're dealing with is, that they can do the subject that they're dealing with. They're the guys that that deal with any of those problems. And like we talked about last time, that if, say if it was a debate between what we use the resources on, like space or the oceans, like exploring either, then these would be the guys that kind of work out how much resources we use on each thing. But yeah.
That's good, thanks.
In the transition, right? Sorry, I interrupted in the transition. Though, right? Or do you?
I'd have guessed here within transition, but then I'm not sure, like, does the computer do more after transition? I don't know.
Cool. All right, so read out the real question and answer. So TVP FAQ 52, will there be a government? As to the need for governments, only during the transition from a monetary-based society to a cybernetic high-technological resource-based economy of common heritage, would it be necessary to utilize the services of system analysts, engineers, computer programmers, et cetera? They will not dictate the policies or have any more advantage than other people. Their job will be to carry out the restoration of the environment to near-natural conditions as possible on land and in sea. They will also economically lay out the most efficient way to manage transportation, agriculture, city planning and production. This too is always in the process of modification and updating to fit the needs of the ever-changing civilization. There are no final frontiers.
Hey Kyle, how's it going? Can you hear us, Kyle? If you just want to type in the chat box, Kyle will be able to.
You want to message me on? All right, well, if he pops up, we'll say hello.
Shall we continue with the questions?
Yes. Was there anything more that we wanted to talk about on that?
It says they will not dictate the policies or have any more advantage than other people. I'm confused, like, aren't they the ones that are supposed to kind of tell us what we need to do? Because they're the smart ones? Am I wrong?
No, so you're right, but to do what in what situation? They won't tell you that you are to wear Nikes instead of Adidas. They're not going to care what color blazer you're going to wear that day. Or if you want to go out naked altogether, who cares? But if you are to ask, what kind of brakes do I put on my, whatever it is, bicycle, car, train tracks? They are going to be the guys to tell you. Because, you know, unless you got, as you mentioned before, competence in the area, you don't get to say these things. Or you do, but they're going to be dismissed because you just don't have expertise.
So the competent ones can dictate, right?
So not dictate, they literally just have more information and more skills in the area. It's just like when you're a mechanic, you don't. So that's to the degree you want to call it dictatorship, sure, you can. Just so long as you know what you mean by the word, you know?
Yeah, 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 it's not going to be like.
I think we'll probably be just about the opposite to what we'd call democracy now, which is where people are told to make decisions based on a fair sort of just bullshit that's pumped out by the system. And you know, you don't know what you'd make a decision on. You're told lies from, you know, the advantage of a certain number of people. Whereas these people would have knowledge about how resources, what the resources are, what we can do with them, what processes we can use to make sure they're equitably distributed. But they wouldn't be saying you have to do this. Then everybody, you know, everyone would be fully informed about what what the lie of the land is, what a situation is, this is what we're dealing with. And then everybody would then have as much say in saying, how do you go ahead with that? They'd have the actual knowledge to go ahead and put it in place and actually put the systems in place to manage the resources. That's how I read it.
And the thing that I try and remember this is that, yeah, there will be people to some kind of degree in a position of power to make a decision of some sort. But the setup is that there's no individual wealth, basically. So there's no real reason to do anything that doesn't benefit you as well as benefiting everyone else. Because it's one of the same, there's no, it benefits me versus it benefits anyone else. Kind of, this might be a little further down the line to really get into the mentality of people. But that'll be the kind of, the way I see it.
Fresco did say something quite important too. It is not a privilege, it is hard work. People assign these tasks, do not lay in a hammock all day. They are responsible for your medicine and working, for your transportation moving at the speed that is promised and advertised. And your, I don't know, education and everything else and food, you know, working as it is described. So all of this stuff will require people to literally work. It's not, it's not going to be like some sort of badge of, I'm the cool kid, you know, not really. It's literally going to be your skills pushed to the limit to bring about this new society. So I don't know. People really have all kinds of different convictions, I think, about this project. And maybe they have a picture of, the best in my head is Hollywood's picture of, what was it, Demolition Man? Everything's white and everything's so clean and nobody just gives a shit. I mean, to get to that stage, you kind of have to put in a lot of work.
And also I think that one very different thing from now is that we will probably have a lot of information, like in the TV, we have monitoring systems. We would know that we're running out of resources if it's the case. So if someone says something that doesn't quite match what the data you're getting, you'll probably have, we'll probably be a more educated society. So probably have some degree of understanding of what's going on to kind of get this information and technicians is giving us and to process it, to compare it. And I think in the end, they don't dictate anything because you can just dismiss what they're telling you. Oh, build a house like this, this is the most efficient way to build a house. You can check the specs, but you can also build it. And if it doesn't work, you can move on, check a different design. So they don't dictate it because if you don't do what they tell you, you're not going to jail like today. Today, if you don't follow the rules, you're going to jail. So you are in kind of dictatorship. I think it's not a dictatorship because of that, because you're not going to jail if you don't follow what they're saying. But if you do follow and it works, I think that's what it's all about. And if it doesn't work, you move on to a different design.
Yeah, I think I just had it in me, like, I don't know, that somebody would, or mine, like, enjoy being able to say, I know what I'm doing, but you don't. So I think, but you recovered, well, you all covered it in the long run. But I think what you already said about things being transparent so that you can see for yourself, so that you can ensure that obviously this person isn't doing it for the wrong gain. And like you said, it's just a weird value system that I'm not used to. I mean, I'm not used to anything being transparent or trusting anybody at the top sort of thing. So it's, I don't know, I'm sure I'll come to find it great.
Snap, I think, I think I go through everybody, Mick. I think that's why it's, you know, a lot of people shy away from anything outside that because that's the kind of reference that we're all used to, is what we have now. Have you read chapter 10 of, from the best that money can't buy? It's called Who Will Make the Decisions? And I think in one of the magazines was a, an extract from it. That might be worth reading because it does go into this in a lot more detail. I've just got it in front of me here. So it might be worth putting a link to that round after this discussion.
Yeah, definitely. If you share with me, I can share with everyone else.
Yeah, well, I'll try and get the link. I've just got the paper printout at the moment, but yeah, I'll try and get the link to you.
All right, so it's all on this very much the same topic. The next question 53 is, what is the role of cybernetion as decision makers?
So just because there's a pause, nobody's really talking. Should we just follow the list and just go from top down and see what people wrote?
Yeah, sure. So David, you're first.
Hi, sorry, I'm just trying to find that link, I'll come back to that. Right. Yeah, I thought the question, like somebody said, it was quite similar to the first question. But I've just put a cybernetion of society should be achieved via that process of competent democracy, i.e. the extent to which it is achieved will be directed by the informed will of the people using that process of transparency that Mick and Hury have just been talking about. And I imagine it would be done to achieve processes that are done inefficiently using human abilities and will be able to calculate resource allocation according to the will of the people who have directed its input.
Good. Danny just said the same as above, so move on to me. Cybernetion is the extension of robotic systems into the environment with the ability to manage Earth's resources and monitor the situation on the planet, enabling the system to automatically arrive at decisions based on the scientific method, enabling the system to accurately respond to natural disasters far faster than humans. No decisions are made on a whim when a politician has a bad day or based on influence from the environment. A cybernetic system will be free of these human foibles with the goal of engineering an environment which is able to produce abundance and secure the future of the human race and this planet. That's my war rally. No, there's no wars. Hilio?
Yeah, I'll see, mate. I'll say that cybernetion will allow us to arrive at solutions much quicker than ever before because of their capacity for data processing which surpasses that of humans. Cybernetion can allow human beings to better manage themselves, their earth needs resources, if used in a relevant way. And I also think, Jack Fresco mentioned that there'll be like backup systems, just in case like the main one fails and there's others to, as a backup, yeah.
Yeah, multiple redundancy is the kind of word for that.
Oh, that's what it's called.
Yeah, redundant systems means backup systems. It just makes you sound a little bit fancier, that's fine.
Okay, next up is me. I don't know, honestly, I just read what's the role of cybernetion. So maybe they didn't know what cybernetion is. As far as I'm aware, Fresco coined the term, or at least I saw him use the term first. And since then, just only him, I don't know. And it simply means cybernetics applied to automation, a process using automated feedback loops as far as I know. Essentially, a process now is automated where cybernetics multiplies, loops back on itself, checks for failures, betters itself, multiplies again, process goes on, goes on. So if the process is automated, I think this is where you get into the whole idea of when Fresco talked about the robots that would essentially be maintenance bots or so would become amphibious and would be able to rearrange their structure, all that kind of crazy fancy stuff. But I think it's literally just allows for self-repair, self-maintenance, self-repair. That's just my interpretation. If I'm wrong, please call it out.
I had it in me that cybernetion would be used to feed houses, clothe us, take the shit work and help us run a society efficiently. So I guessed, like, cybernetion might be part of the decision-making process. I think what David said about kind of taking all his input and obviously the more competent ones get more of the input.
Now it's me.
Good.
Okay. From my perspective, cybernetion is kind of, in terms of the decision-making, I think it's kind of a computer. The computer is not making decisions about what you read, about, you know, what, how you do your stuff. It just allocates resources based on availability. And so you want to request a task, like, oh, I want to save this file. I want to open this program and the computer goes, this software requests some resources like memory, like processing power, and then the computer allocates that and the program runs. So I think it's much more like that and like a, an automated transportation system, like a self-driving car. It doesn't dictate, it doesn't tell you what, where to go or if you should go or not, what the speed is sometimes. But yeah, they speed sometimes, but it just, it just takes your information, where do you want to go? And takes you there using the most efficient road or route. And I also think about the human body, like, it's constantly, like you just said, it's constantly checking for failures and repairing itself. So I think it's more like that, not, it doesn't make any decisions about where we're going. But it makes, it makes sure we have the resources and that whenever there's a failure, it's quickly repaired.
I would also like to contribute that in chapter eight, the next phase of evolution, machine intelligence, page 43 in the best that money can buy, you can also get a pretty good look at what cybernetion is and what role it plays in the Venus Project and its concept of resource-based economy.
Good, thanks. So it's quite a long answer to this, real answer. Do you want to take it in shifts or just want to do it?
I can do it if you want.
Yeah, well, just shout if you want to take a break. Thanks.
So TVP FAQ number 53, what is the role of cybernetion as decision makers? When computers eventually have sensors extended into all areas of the physical and social complex, we will be able to achieve centralization of decision-making. In a global resource-based economy, decisions would not be based on local politics but on a holistic problem-solving approach. This centralized system could be connected to research labs and universities with all data monitored and updated constantly. Most of the technology needed for such infrastructure management is currently available. The major difference between today's computer technology and the system we recommend is that our system extends its autonomic nervous system, environmental sensors into all areas relevant to the social complex. It coordinates a balance between production and distribution and operates to maintain a balanced load economy. This technology of industrial electronic feedback can be applied to the entire global economy. For example, with electrical sensors extended into the agricultural region, computerized systems would manage and control agriculture by monitoring the water table, insects, pests, plant diseases, soil nutrients and so forth. The information process will enable us to arrive at more appropriate decision-making base, yeah, more appropriate decision-making based on feedback from the environment. Computers and artificial intelligence will serve as catalysts for change. They will establish scientific scales of performance. It is doubtful that in the latter part of the 21st century, people will play any significant role in decision-making. Eventually, the installation of AI and machine decision-making will manage all resources serving the common good. This will result in a more humane and meaningful approach for shaping tomorrow's civilization that is not based on the opinions or desires of a particular sect or individual. All decisions would be made on the basis of a comprehensive survey of resources, energy and existing technology without allowing any advantage to a particular nation or select group of people. This may be accomplished with large-scale computer-based processes that can assist us in defining the most humane and appropriate ways to manage environmental and human affairs. This is essentially the function of government. With computers processing trillions of bits of information per second, existing technologies far exceed the human capacity for processing information and they can arrive at equitable and sustainable decisions about the development and distribution of physical resources. With this potential, we would evolve beyond political decisions made on the basis of power and advantage. How many people fell asleep?
I totally said it.
No, I'm still awake, don't worry.
Go on, say it.
No, I was joking.
I was going to say, was that kind of saying that the computer will do quite a lot of it?
Yeah, so I just want to go back. So a word that you stumbled over a little bit was autonomic nervous system. It is a bit of a strange word, so fair enough. Just so everyone knows, autonomic nervous system in humans is the automatic nervous system, basically. It's a bit that beats your heart, keeps your lungs going, all that good stuff that you just do without thinking. So I think it's quite, it's quite a relevant word when talking about putting out this environmental census. Because I think it's very, very much like a, a part of the larger organism of Earth, you know what I mean? In concept, it has the kind of link to the human body is quite good in explaining how it works. That's what I was translating.
And he also talked about like the, eventually the installation of AI and machine decision-making will manage all resources serving the common good, so.
Yeah, interesting line again, I had something like that written down. And the question that I still have is, okay, you have an automatic system that runs the day-to-day affairs, makes sure everyone has food and stuff, but who makes the upgrades? Because we know that things will be changing all the time. We're not going to reach that utopia where nothing gets better anymore. We've reached it technologically. So there's still going to be upgrades and does that indicate that maybe artificial intelligence is going to be upgrading itself? Or whether humans will be upgrading it? It's quite interesting because that's where I see the actual decision-making taking place in an automated economy. How did make, where do the changes occur? What upgrades do we bring?
Yeah, like you never see, I don't think, do we ever have these arguments in like a Star Trek world? You know what I mean? Do they ever say who's doing the upgrades or that like just humans do them, don't they? Mostly, or Commander Data?
So if I can So if, um, if I can contribute again, it's the same, it's, I mean, really, anything and everything covered in FAQ will be covered in the best that money can't buy. But Fresco does refer to the more advanced the computers will get and the more automation and electrical sensors will be put out in the world and the social complex, the more you will actually start to see this, the more you will start to see computers improving themselves. And they will do this by, again, well, I mean, he referred to satellites essentially pointing to whatever location. And there were mention of MEMS, micro-electromechanical systems, which I've yet to really research in depth. All I know is just this abbreviation and that somehow it's incredibly beneficial to doing exactly this kind of work, upgrading systems. But it's very, all very vague, but all I can say is, yeah, Aiden, what you have suggested that computers will improve themselves, yeah, and that's, that's the whole concept, as little of it as I know, of cybernetics. Cybernetics is exactly that. Multiplies, comes back, if there's a problem, fix, then multiply the fix. The fixing counters the problem, again, loop back, find the fix for it exists, and you keep repeating, repeating, repeating. So in, yeah, I mean, in due time, there's not going to be a need for a programmer, especially not since even in monetary system now, you got things like Watson and shit, you know, IBM's prodigy. And as well as deep learning, all this crazy stuff Google is doing now. I mean, this is all happening now. And they're not even focusing on it to, to solve social problems. They're solving to get more data. It's all about that money.
Yeah, I think we touched in that one of the previous discussions, that the technology or the ability is there already, but it's being used for the needs of a minority to, in a controlling way. I think Jacques Fresco and other people in cybernetics are always keen to point out that the actual aims of any cyber-nated society, the parameters would be set by human beings, you know? The order thing about cyber-nated society, AI going off and doing its own thing and then turning inwards and on, on, onto its creators, humans, is probably, is the science, stuff of science fiction, because if the parameters of, you know, cybernetics have been put in, well, you know, if he needs an upgrade for this system based on the, you know, the information it's got, it will upgrade itself. That's only doing what human beings wanted to do within a certain parameter. Hopefully, such would, that would happen, yeah.
Oh, you're right. Dave, you're completely right. It's again, same, literally, chapter eight, best of money can't buy. Bear in mind that these mechanical children would only do what we humans programmed them to do. Exact quote from the book. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, really, just anybody who actually wants any more info, look up the best that money can't buy.
It's expensive though, isn't it?
Shall we go on to the next question?
Yes, I am muted. Um, I think David, I was just saying, um, if you have a Kindle or you don't, can download the Kindle app on your phone, you can get it off that, that store for a lot less.
No, I don't have a Kindle.
If you have a smartphone, like an Apple or an Android.
It's not a very good one at the moment, yeah.
Fair enough.
I mean, there are chapters, sort of excerpts on, um, the magazine site, which I've been reading, so they're useful.
Yeah, the magazine's like really, really good. Um, I'll, I'll let you know if anything comes about. I'm trying to find some to start maybe lending people or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, next question then, uh, fifty-four, last one for today. How would you evaluate the robot conception of the future? As in the science fiction muses, everything is going to be done by the robot. Is everything going to be different or humans be the most effective factor? We've just answered this. Um, so if anyone wants to say anything about this, you can. I'm just going to reread through my, what I wrote down just to myself to see if I've said anything that I haven't said before.
Yeah, I think, so at the moment, when automation is put in place, um, it's not for the benefit of all, it's for monetary profit. So when, in the past, when work has been replaced by uh, robots, automated processors, what's tended to be happened is uh, companies or institutions that use that have then used all the money they don't have to pay workers for and the efficiencies that are put in by using that for their own profit. So they store it, they hoard it, they speculate it, they gambit, uh, and then everybody else has to pay the price when it all goes wrong. So the majority don't benefit and that's causes resentment and hardship, and also resentment against the technology. So again, it's another example of capitalism and money subverting the science. Um, because even, even though people, you know, like you had the Luddites, uh, you know, even now people worry about technology taking over their jobs. Most of the automation is actually replacing repetitive and unfulfilling tasks. So why should that be a threat to people? Because I know how it's going to be used by the monetary system. You know, we've had the ability to produce automata since the time of the ancient Greeks, you know, they're, they're producing, um, sort of toy animals, toy owls and stuff like that. If it had been developed over those years according to these principles, it probably could be in that position now, um, where automation and robots were doing the things that people didn't want to do. Perhaps. But I, I don't know, I can still see some tasks that people would want to do with human skills and input if they wanted to. And people should be allowed to do that as long as people want to do that, but not because of being forced to do it, because they have to make money uh, for capital. So it should always be directed by human factors, and I think I put, has to be done what's best for people and not what's best for technology. Ellipsis.
That's good. I think, um, I'm not going to go over why I say, because it's all been said before, but just because I'm better if I find out and I've come from this kind of background. Um, for anyone who doesn't know, um, or haven't really kind of looked into AI and stuff before, there's kind of two terms we really talk about here. Um, one is the singularity, which is where, you know, technology gets so far advanced that it takes over and can upgrade itself beyond, basically past the point where humans have any control of it. It's kind of called the singularity, it's like an ellipse or something like that. Um, so that's kind of what we talked about before, the basic computers doing that. And it happens in a bunch of TV, TV shows like Terminator and things. But if anyone is really interested in watching a quite good movie on a kind of positive singularity that is not too unfeasible, um, there's a film called Her, H E R, um, with Jacqueline Phoenix in it. It's quite interesting. Um, but basically that is machines gaining consciousness and then disappearing off into oblivion. Um, the other one I want to kind of, which is more about this, I think, is, um, transhumanism. The idea of humans and technology merging, which I think is a bit more feasible in terms of we're kind of already there with our mobile phones and stuff, you know, we're already a part robotic, part online personality type thing. Um, well, most people, some people aren't. Um, but that might be the way that we're going. And then, so instead of having like robots and humans, it's, it's kind of a blurred line. Just where I think there's a possibility from a sci-fi kind of looking at it.
Yeah, I like that look.
Yeah, I think, I think sci-fi does offer good examples of, um, an author's vision of where technology can go and what it can do. It can be a good introduction to concepts for people. It's also frightened people as well. So I think it's a good idea to read the right science fiction book. Feel like going to be totally put off by the concept.
I mean, so long as we're discussing science fiction, I've, you know, I mean, it's very rare to see one which doesn't first and foremost basically transfer cowboys and Indians into space. It's always some motherfucker or another needs helping. Sergeant, private, whatever the fuck, fly to this and this, take this shit, because apparently planet is for all its high-tech unable to sustain itself. We need to travel light-years and light-years to fuck up some alien civilization to get this unobtanium uranium fuckanium back into our planet and then fix all our stuff up. Because that's how we function. That's where we're so high-tech. Yeah, humans, you know what I mean? So I don't really have so much fandom for any of it. It's very rare to find something that says, hey, here's this piece of thing. We could, I don't know, make your heart not problematic or hey, I don't know, let's use this mechanism for easier access for disabled people or some shit. It's very rare. I don't actually, that's the thing, I'm literally struggling for names. They're always obscure, hmm?
Elysium, the one where, uh, like it's, it kind of, I think all these things, I mean, who knows what the future holds, man?
Good example, by the way.
Like, at least with Elysium, right at the end, it seemed like that was what the Carson or whatever is going to do, like the, the, you tell the computer, just help everybody that needs helping and it goes out and fucking helps everyone. That, that's what I want.
Yeah, but the values is all I'm saying. The values connected to the tech was always we're aristocrats, you're the bootlickers. What the fuck do they even need humans working in those fucking irradiated plants anyway, dude? You got robots, for real. Come on, man. So yeah, you know what I mean? Hollywood with all its necessity for drama can just go to shit with real good concepts, and it did. People fucking locked up in some irradiated chambers. Give me a fucking break, man. You can regenerate cells and make people immortal. You need people in irradiated chambers? Fuck. These people win Oscars, you get me?
Lulus, have you, um, heard about the concept of the story of the hero? It's like a generalized, I can't remember, like seven, eight-part story that every hero must go through. It's basically a story arc for heroes and all, like so many films fall into this. And it's always like this hero character like goes, it's from like, you know, um, The Hobbit to Harry Potter, all of it, like they have the same thing. So there's a kind of bit of nonsense in it. But at the same time, you kind of, to tell a good story, it needs that kind of drama stuff. It can't just be a boring, uh, nearly utopia. You know what I mean? It can't, it can't be kind of like that. So at least for people today, unless you're doing a proper documentary side thing, kind of needs this kind of bullshit stories in them.
See, and I mean, one, I agree with you. Two, yes, what you're saying literally is taught in English GCSE curriculum. It literally is. I went through it not more than, I don't know, four months ago. So, and then the teacher, by the way, when I said, oh, does the person have to go through struggle? Well, otherwise it's boring. And I think, see, the thing is, it's not a complaint that I'm about to say, but I am going to give a discrepancy. And this discrepancy is that of values. So while we still have the thinking that if you don't go through shit to get to a better place, if those values are not somehow challenged, not somehow thought about in the new light, then you literally, I, I don't understand the surprise on people's faces when they see rich people saying that. Yeah, motherfucker, you gotta go through this bad job, you know, to the power of whatever the fuck it is deemed fit in, in society, until you get to my place. You don't get to be here for nothing. Oh, you know, don't pay attention that I was born into this fucking family because my mother just happened to own a vagina that was born into a rich family. No, 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 you gotta go through shit, because that's what society says is all right. So I don't buy that, you know, I don't buy that. Even though I do recognize that, um, to create a dramatic effect, I don't obviously know how to do that, you know what I'm saying? I'm not a writer. And so I don't know how to tell a story about, hey, let's not kill each other, but, uh, you know, I don't know how to put the drama. That's the whole idea. How do you put across to Fresco's point of view when people keep harping on about this whole, oh, well, what would be reward, you know, and when he says it very straight. If, if it's not reward enough for you to see a society without poor people, without death, without suicides, war, politics and bullshit, I don't know what is, you know what I mean? How do you put, put that value across on the big screen? Without any of this fucking, put your hands up, ah, my child, you know, all that fucking nonsense that we see over and over again, Jesus. Anyway, sorry.
Good question. I, I was thinking about, uh, the motion picture the Venus Project, uh, wants to do, and I was thinking exactly about that. How do you do a, let's say, uh, a motion picture in a similar structure that everyone wants to see and you can project in many different theaters across the world and uh, without using that same structure, without having conflicts? I mean, how to portray a society where the conflicts are supposed to be avoided? And in a structure like people like to, to, to see these kinds of, these kinds of movies in which people go through many, uh, conflicts.
Think like, I always think that it's basically impossible to do any film that's not set in this culture. You know, it, it, in, Lord, um, Star Wars is set in the USA, is set in this world. The culture is there because you can't, you can't draw influence from anything outside of this world and where we live in today. So you, like, you know, films about like nineteen, what is it, nineteen eighty-four is set, set back when it was written, because that's all it knew at that time. And it's the same with all films, all books and stuff that are trying to talk about the future or trying to talk about sci-fi, that it's still set in today's values quite a lot, because that's what the readership has and is what, the only, the only thing that's important is connecting with your reader, not conveying an authentic message of alienness or, you know, a different culture. So it's very, very hard.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know how many of you remember that Fresco did say very clearly that there will have to be many films made, not just one, not, there's not going to be just this one magical picture who is just going to grab Arabs, Swedish people, Chinese, Russians, you know, how the fuck is that going to work? You know, Chinese have certain convictions that they will just not let go, as opposed to Russians will have completely different ones. So, you know, obviously, I don't know how the hell you're going to manage that, but they got some fucking challenges.
I think, um, I've not read the book yet, but you've mentioned it and that's the, um, is it a book looking forward? Something along that lines would be something to basically screen, where you follow a person or two people through their lives, so you have the human interest.
Cloud Atlas.
Yeah, and then that goes on, you know, you can, you can create a plot, you can create dilemmas, all the human dilemmas that are facing perhaps those people. Know what it was like before a resource-based, resource-based economy came in. Uh, and they can, you know, there's perhaps people wondering what it was like. Children, that kind of thing, you know, so you're sort of contrasting. That, that might be one way.
Definitely, yeah. And like, Looking Forward is a pretty good book. Jacques teamed up with a writer and kind of now looking back on it, I have a feeling he's not kind of entirely proud of it, you know what I mean? And the writer get away with some stuff, which is, but it's kind of fair enough. Um, another book, if you're interested, um, on these very same lines, is called, um, The Rings of Venus. So the kid's book, uh, well, kid's book, but I found it entertaining. Um, where like this thirteen-year-old boy gets operated by his dad and moves to the Venus Project into the first experimental city. Um, and, you know, it's really, really good. And then at the end, they just like have to force some conflict and sort it out. And it's a bit kind of slapstick, but it does get across to, to me, it's one of the best things for getting across the day-to-day in the experimental city. Just like how you get your food was actually visualized and, you know, you experienced it. It was really, really good. So more reading if anyone's interested.
Yeah, by Pat McCord. All right, guys, you are all fascinating, but I am going to have to take off. Sorry. But this was really good discussion. So thank you all. And see you next time, maybe.
See you later, Lulus, take care.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Did we answer the?
Have we? Have we read out all the questions?
We haven't read out the. We haven't read out the third question yet.
We read out the answer to it.
No, I'll just do that now, unless anyone else has anything to say beforehand. And I think there is no. T V P F A Q fifty four, how do you evaluate the robot conception in the future? As in the science fiction movies, everything is going to be done by robots. Is everything going to be different or will humans be the most effective factor? Sci fi movies are written by artists and writers who are seldom qualified to describe technological developments, particularly as applied to the social system. Many express a fear of technology and a lack of deeper understanding of the humane potential of technological developments. Technologies are simply extensions of human attributes. In technology, developed countries, industry and the military are assigned more and more decision making to machine technology. Machines will not take over, but they will eventually be assigned tasks. Today's machines are handled one thousand, can handle one thousand trillion bits of information per second. No human can have this capacity. In the near future, the operation of global society will be far too complex for any sophisticated group of humans to manage. This is why I urgently advocate the society utilizing cybernetics not merely for tabulation and measurements. But also to process vital information and channel it for the benefits of all mankind. Only our capable computers can store and sort through the data necessary. To arrive at equitable and sustainable analysis and decisions about the environment and distribution of resources on a global scale. In most visionary writers and. The most visionary writers and futurists of the twentieth century would have difficulty accepting the possibility of robots replacing surgeons. Engineers, top management, airline pilots and other professionals. It is no longer unthinkable that machines may one day write novels or poems, compose music and eventually surpass humans. In government and the management of world affairs. But it is not about the morality and ethics of human participation, but a straightforward description of future technological trends. Okay.
I like it up to, until the bit he said that robots might start writing poetry and music. I'm not sure about that.
Didn't Ray Kurzweil. Go on, Aiden, what did he do, did he compose a song?
Yeah, Ray Kurzweil was the first guy in the fifty sixties to develop an algorithm which composed original music, but, you know, it's based on algorithm in a, in a way. So there's lots of people out there, especially in the twentieth century and towards the end, people like John Cage and others that were doing. Basically algorithmic based compositions, tell a computer run random five times and I'll take those things and compose them. Put them into a pattern and compose it and like, you know, is, is that the computer making the decision, is that computer making the music? It's hard to say.
The computer's been input by a human being, so. Although those things are fun though, aren't they, I mean, I'd like automate, well, from a personal point of view, I'd like automation and computers to make the decisions, you know, the. Humans fuck up, like resource allocation, like the repetitive tasks that really nobody wants to do, but things like creative stuff. They are things I think that the human mind enjoys doing. It's funny what these humans are gonna be doing if they're not creating stuff, they're not sharing ideas, there's a computer. Doing all the stuff and they're just taking in the output from the computer, whatever, poems and books and films the computers come up with.
Maybe it'd be more like.
I'm not sure about that.
Captain Picard alongside data, doing creative things together.
Yeah, the interaction would be, yeah, that's, that's, that would be okay, yeah, but I can't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like a world where it was all being replaced by. The computers come up with this, alright, okay. Because the human brain needs, needs activity, you know, otherwise it.
Absolutely, and that's what the Venus Project, you know, can people out of work and stuff, they must do to allow you to be active in your brain. Stay home on the couch and eat potatoes all day.
Yeah. They can if you want to.
Can if you want to, but engineered into the environment, there's still be challenges for you. Because it's kind of like my ger, I've got some gerbils, I have to engineer some challenges into their environment, otherwise they get bored. And it affects their health.
Yeah. Or we all do, we all tend to do that in our life anyway, you know.
I, I think, I'm not sure this is kind of. I don't know, but. In some of the sci fi that I read, there's getting there in terms of nearing a post scarcity world at least. And basically, the humans are kind of. They're kind of just the pleasure guys, you do whatever you want kind of thing, because that's what humans can do and robots can't do. So they just kind of get on with their lives, do whatever they want to do, climb mountains or go and have orgies and take drugs, it's kind of defense. So, I don't know, I don't, we'll make robots that can, you know, appreciate sunlight or. I don't know, I'm kind of rambling now, so I'll stop.
You can't tell what where the future goes, can you? But, yeah, I'd like to continue writing.
Yeah, for me, I, it's interesting because it. What for me is less, less about. You know, robots gaining sentience or anything like that, becoming like us, like humans who are. Separate from everything else and can make decisions, it's us, we classify ourselves down to be, well, we're basically kind of robots. So the difference, I, you know, it's a scale rather than a yes, no kind of thing. And, you know, they're slowly becoming more complex and at a certain, certain point, you're just gonna start having to treat them differently.
But I would hope that the technology would always be there, as a, as a lot of science fiction writers have pointed out. And warned that it should be, is that the parameters of that technology should always be. For the benefit of humanity and those parameters put into it by human beings. You know what I mean, so if there was ever a point, I mean, you never know. Generation after generation, if technology did start saying, well. We've got a few issues with this, you know. The people around it, how, how do we just tinker with it to stop it doing this? Because the computer might think it's a good idea, but we don't. It would have to be that option, I would think, because there's always the unexpected around, around the corner. And that's the trouble with today's technology, is that it's not really there, because it is just doing. What's, what's a minority of people do, that's working for a minority of people. It's like, I mean, it's like, when you look at your laptop and every, you know, you switch your laptop on and there's a thing that says. Windows update, and you're there for about five, 10 minutes where you can actually do anything on your computer because your, your laptops are dating. Yeah, that's rubbish. But then that's the technology doing what it wants to do and you kind of input into it, so hopefully that would, that would go. That's just a small example, because that's what happened today.
I think Gaiden mentioned it earlier about like the line becoming blurred between human and machines later on, that's like Ray Kurzweil's area, though, I'm not sure. I have no idea exactly how it's gonna go, again, we can't tell the future's gonna go, but the Transcendent Man's an interesting documentary, if you wanna take a look, I've just put the link in the. In the chat bar.
And one thing that Jacques kind of says quite a lot is, you know. Why, why would you give machines the ability to do unexpected things? I, I'm not sure I'm on it, but that's the kind of position that he, he wants to say with the Venus Project. Just like, you know, you don't, you wouldn't want a machine motion, so we wouldn't do it. You wouldn't want a machine that's just decided that it might be more efficient to stop doing anything and save power, you know. Sorry, I asked you.
Hey guys, I'm gonna shoot up as well. Been a lot of people today, so yeah, cheers for coming, guys, and I'll see you all probably next week.
Yeah, it's really good, thanks everyone.